Good evening. It is 5:30 and I'd like to call the September 14th, 2021 meeting of the Richland School District Two School Board Meeting to order. May I please have a motion to go into executive session?
Madam Chair.
Ms. Mackey.
I move that we convene an executive session for the purpose of student appeals, student admission requests into the district's adult education program superintendent's contract.
Do I have a second? Seconded by Dr. Cheryl Caution Parker, any discussion? Seeing none, we will now move into executive session. Oh, we do have to vote. That would be important. Let's take the vote. Is everybody set up electronically or just do we need to do hand vote? Everybody set up? Okay. Oh, we're on this side tonight. Motion carries unanimously. We will now move into executive session. Hey, good evening. May I please have a motion to come out of executive session?
Madam Chair.
Ms. Mackey.
Please let the record reflect that executive session was concluded at 6:19 PM.
Thank you. May I have a second? Seconded by Dr. Cheryl Caution Parker, any discussion? Take a vote? We do a hand vote? We move to come out of executive session. Thank you. Okay, at this time, we will have our inspirational moment and pledge of allegiance. Ms. Mackey.
Thank you, Madam Chair. With regard to our teachers, our employees, staff members, parents and community members who are working so diligently to get our kids educated this year, I wanted to share an inspirational piece by Mother Teresa. People are often unreasonable, irrational or self-centered. Forgive them anyway. If you are kind, people may very well accuse you of selfish ulterior motives. Be kind anyway. If you are successful, you may win some unfaithful friends and some genuine enemies. It's okay. Succeed anyway. If you are honest and sincere, people may deceive you. It's okay. Be honest and sincere anyway. What you spend years creating, others could destroy overnight. It's okay. Create anyway. If you find serenity and happiness, some may be jealous. It's okay. Be happy and have serenity anyway. The good you do today may often be forgotten. It's okay. Do good anyway. Give the best you have and it will never be enough perhaps, but it's okay. Give your best anyway. In the final analysis, it's not between you and anyone else. It's between you and the higher power that you serve. It was never between you and them anyway. Stay the course. Persevere. Bless you. If you will now join me, stand while we recite the Pledge of Allegiance.
Our pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice
Okay, at this time, we do the approval of the agenda. May I have a motion regarding the approval of the agenda?
Madam Chair.
Ms. Mackey.
I move to approve the September 14th, 2021 regular board meeting agenda.
Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Manning. Any discussion?
Madam Chair.
Ms. Agostini.
That was loud. 0.3 superintendent contract until the September 28th, 2021 board meeting.
Okay. Okay, is there a second? Second. Okay.
You can amend the motion. You can amend a main motion.
Okay, it does have to be germane to the motion.
And it is. I'm asking to postpone, remove an item.
I got you, Ms. Agostini. I'm just contemplating. I'm making sure that we are in guidelines and making sure that it is germane to the motion. I do understand that. Just give me a second. Legal counsel, would that be germane to the motion? May I ask for your expertise in that?
The motion to the agenda to postpone.
Yes, is it germane to the motion of the approval of the agenda? In your opinion?
It can go either way. Okay. All right, then if it's going to, if that's the case and that's what legal counsel has decided, then we're going to go with the first motion.
Madam Chair. It's just a second, Dr. Scott.
Yes.
We're gonna go to the, we're gonna go back to the first motion and vote on the first motion. Okay? So...
Madam Chair.
Yes, Dr. Scott.
Yes, thank you. That's incorrect. Anytime there's a motion on the floor, someone can make a motion to amend that. It's just the person who made the motion has to agree with yes or no whether they want to accept the amendment. So that will be Ms. Mackey.
We have varying, thank you, Dr. Scott. I've heard, I've heard that also. We have varying opinions and so at this point, I'm going to make the executive decision.
No, we can't make executive decisions. We have to follow Robert's rules of order.
Dr. Scott, at this time, I'm going to make the executive decision to go with what counsel had said.
No, we have to go by Robert's rules of order.
Again, I'm going to make the executive decision to go with what counsel has said and said that it is up to the chair to make the decision. And at this time, I'm going to make the decision that I'm going to stick with the point that I think the first motion is carries. And also to your point, since who made the amendment? That was Ms. Mackey? Was that you, Ms. Mackey? Yes. I will give you the opportunity, since Dr. Scott mentioned that point, do you want to amend your motion? If not, then we will stick with the motion as you have presented it.
Madam Chair, can...
Yes, Mr. Manning.
So, the way that, and I mean, we can do it however, but the way that we have been practicing this was you have a motion on the floor, a second. Someone can make a secondary motion that's germane to the primary motion and the board chair has the authority to determine whether it's germane or not. Not amend the original motion. We got away from amending the original motion because it got messy. We were asking for friendly amendments and that sort of thing. And so we moved towards, we had moved towards upon the suggestion of folks that came to talk to us about Robert's rules of having a secondary motion to the primary motion, which was what I understood Ms. Agostini to do, but it is up to the board chair to determine whether it's germane or not. So that's still with, the way I understand it, that's still within your purview, but to amend the motion is something we've gone away from.
Okay, so let me make sure we're clear. And audience, y'all, please forgive us. We are going to work through this one way or the other. Give us a few minutes. Okay, so let me make sure that I am clear. So your perspective is according to what you're saying is, is that what Dr. Scott's saying is not correct, that there would not be a need to amend Ms. Mackey's motion, but Ms. Agostini can make a second amendment to the motion.
I like to state, I'm not saying anybody's incorrect. I'm stating the way I understand it to work is that, and the way that it was practiced previously was to do the secondary motion, not to, not to go back and ask somebody to amend their original motion.
Okay.
But to do a secondary motion to the primary motion where it's germane.
Okay, gotcha. Okay, so what we need to do then is if I'm, and my people correct me if I am wrong, we need to dispense with the first motion and then go to the primary motion? Is this correct?
No, you have to determine whether the motion that Ms. Agostini made is germane to the primary motion.
It's germane.
If you feel that it is, then you would allow that motion to go forward with the possibility of a second and then a vote. If that passed, then that would be part, that would become in addition to the original motion.
Okay.
If you determine it's not germane, then that motion will not carry, will not have any, will not be open for a second and we would have discussion on the primary motion and then vote on the primary motion.
Okay, y'all just not gonna make this easy tonight, are y'all? Okay. Okey dokey. So what it boils down to is that I basically have, I need to make a decision whether this is germane.
Correct.
Okay. And according to you, our attorney, it is in my purview to make a decision that it is germane, correct? Okay. All right. I am going to make the decision that, in light of the fact that we all knew that this was an agenda item for tonight, I'm going to rule that it is not germane at this time.
Madam Chair, may I speak?
You, you, give me just a second, Dr. Scott. I'm gonna rule that it's not germane at this time. I'm going to stick with the original motion that Ms. Mackey made. If you're unhappy with that, then you can vote your pleasure. Everybody's entitled to vote however they say fit. So if you're, that's the way that I think that we need to probably proceed at this time. Yes, Dr. Scott?
Madam Chair, thank you so much for that. And as I stated back in executive session, I would have loved to have voted tonight, but this information was not received in a timely manner to give us an opportunity to digest, research and go back and look at other informations as far as other superintendents, what's on their contract and what we want to do. I think Dr. Davis has been doing a phenomenal job, but I want to make sure that I'm at peace with myself by comparing what he's newly asking for to what other superintendents asked. And with that being said, since you have made your decision that it's not germane and I'm not in favor of voting tonight, so it's gonna look like I'm not supporting Dr. Davis, but it's not that. I'm not supporting the decision and how it was made in short notice because giving Dr. Davis a raise, I think he truly deserves one. But also our bus drivers, our teacher assistants, our cafeteria workers, our career facilitators and so many other folks. So with that being said, my vote and my presence don't matter tonight. So everybody have a good night and as they say, be blessed. I'm outta here.
Okay, well, we are all grown adult board members and everybody, as I said earlier, we are all entitled to make whatever statements that we want to make through our actions or our words. That's your choice.
Madam Chair.
Thank you, thank you, Dr. Scott. Have a, have a good evening. Yes, Ms. Agostini?
I too am in agreement with Dr. Scott. I'm truly disappointed that, you know, we've asked to have this postponed and because we just received the information late yesterday, we got clarifying information today presented to us right before the meeting and that is not enough time to allow the board to make accurate judgment on what's being put before us. So I will join Dr. Elkins, Scott, and I will be also leaving this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Agostini. Have a good evening also. Again, we are, we are, just a second, Ms. McFadden, I'm sure you're going to join the rest, but at this time, like I said, we are, everyone is a grown adult board member. I think that Mr. Manning, I would like for you to provide, before we go any further, I'll get to you, Ms. McFadden.
I would like to speak before we do that.
I would get to you in just a second, Ms. McFadden. Just a second. Before you do that, I would like Mr. Manning at this time to give a brief rundown of the timeframe.
Excuse me?
Ms. McFadden, I'm speaking to Mr. Manning.
Dr. Holmes, I requested to say something? It's unfair to allow someone else to get...
Ms. McFadden, I am asking for order. Ms. McFadden, I'm asking for order, please. Thank you. Mr. Manning, before we go any further with that, I would like to have an opportunity for you to run down a timeline because it has been said, or the perception has been given, that this has just been a last minute thing and I don't believe that that is exactly accurate. So what I would like for them to do at this time, and Ms. McFadden, you're free after that, is to, Mr. Manning, can you give a rundown of as to the, as this went down, please?
I will. As is customary, in the 11-plus years I've been on the board, we, there's a designee of the board who works with the superintendent, with the superintendent's counsel and with the board's legal counsel to evaluate the contract of the superintendent and to make decisions as to what would potentially be palatable for the board and brought before the board. That's the way that it's always been done. If it was a group process, that would make it much more difficult to make decisions, but ultimately it is a board decision. I've been working with Dr. Davis, with you, Madam Chair, with the, both legal councils for a period of around two weeks to negotiate the details back and forth, to come up with what was to be presented before the board tonight in executive session, those details that were presented, of which I'd contacted late this weekend. I received the final contract, draft contract to be presented to the board. I then contacted legal counsel who sent details out late yesterday and today. Yesterday afternoon, I called all board members with the details of the draft changes and spoke with each of them individually to present the changes and there are a couple of board members that asked for more information and I've worked diligently from yesterday evening through this afternoon to provide those details and in fact had more detail to provide in executive session.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Manning. I think that it's very important that we lay that down because when we're, when we're in these type of situations, which we see ourselves presented with tonight, there's always two sides to every story and I wanted that to be said. Now, Ms. McFadden, did you still wish to speak?
Absolutely.
Go ahead.
I received notification yesterday about us having to provide information or vote one day before the vote, which is today. I asked for the contract because this is the first time I'd ever heard of it, that we needed to do it. So I'm rushing around trying to get information. I'm going online to figure out, well, how much does the superintendent make? What are the perks? And I'm asking for information. So I'm going with what I can get offline because I can't call, I've been told I can't really call the staff to get information. I have to go through the proper protocol, which is fine and I understand and I respect that. This is my first time on the board. I've been on here for about eight months now. Not having, having not done this before, I want information that I can look at and go through. This is the packet that I was provided at about 11:30 today when I had time while I'm at work to look at, but I'm supposed to make a vote. I was rattled off a whole bunch of numbers, a whole bunch of other information. I wasn't even provided the list that he actually wanted. They went through the list because that's how they normally do it. They went through the list of what he wanted and they picked out what they wanted him to have. We get a phone call saying, this is what we're gonna do.
That's not true.
And I, okay, that may not be true, but this is what I was told because I didn't find that information. Somebody sat down and came up with the list and chose from the list. I got the final draft, not even really a final draft. It's unfair for me to come in here and vote on a packet like this. It is my responsibility as a board member, whether it is, it is my first time or my 40th time. And they never fail to let me realize that I've been doing this for 30 years. I've been doing this for 10 years. I've been on the board for 20 years. Well, I haven't. I've been on the board for eight months and I need the same exact amount of time to go through this, at least I haven't been able to read the first line. And I asked vice chair today, this morning, please don't put this on the agenda because if I don't vote for it, then it's gonna look like I'm being antagonistic and I don't want to approve the contract for Dr. Davis and that's not true. I see his wife, my kids go to school with kids. What does it look like when I come in here and I'm saying, I'm gonna walk out the board meeting and that was what they wanted me to do? Walk out the board meeting, not take the vote because we have to have five people. We already know we got four that's gonna vote for it because that's how it goes.
Ms. McFadden, you are out of line with that.
I might be out of line, but it's the truth.
It's not, it's your truth.
Because I want to do right by Dr. Davis.
Ms. McFadden, we do not defame other board members. You are entitled to speak your truth, but you are not entitled to defame other board members.
I'm not defaming.
So if you're going to speak your truth, if you're going to speak your truth, please speak your truth, but do not defame other board members.
I'm not, okay, I apologize if, if that is the way it was taken.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
That's not what I mean, but what I mean is it's unfair for me to come in here. That's why we're suing the Supreme Court right now. We didn't take the time to read over that proviso and we're putting ourselves in compromising situations and it's unfair for, to ask me to vote for this.
Yes, Ms. Mackey.
And Dr. Davis, they have nothing against you, I promise. I know that you're doing a great job, but I still have questions and concerns that have not been addressed.
Okay, thank you, Ms. McFadden. Ms. Mackey?
Madam Chair.
Yes, ma'am.
Just, just because the word "they" have been tossed around the room tonight and I don't know who they include.
Yes, you do.
Please, no. I'm sorry.
Ms. McFadden, we do not do that at a board meeting. Please refrain.
I'm not sure who they include, but on the chance that "they" includes me, my vote represents what I vote for. I haven't talked to "they" or "they" decided. I think it was made very clear that the board chair and the vice chair, I think that you've discussed that, have discussed the contract before tonight. I won't get into all the details of that because we got into all the details in executive session and I had a chance to ask questions before today and I've done that. I take exception to the "they," what they are gonna do and what they are, that's, that's, that's pretty juvenile and I won't, I take exception to that. What I do want the record to state is that we are not here for a special interest, single item agenda tonight. I will not be leaving this board meeting because Dr. Davis is superintendent, his evaluation deserves the same attention as student appeals, as student admission requests into the Delta Education Center, as the proviso 1.108, course approval for DLI, sixth grade advanced Spanish language literacy and culture, and update on COVID because the elephant in the room is that COVID is very real, regardless of how you feel about max, about vaccines or masks, it's very real. Draft agendas for next meeting, I'm not going to leave the meeting because all of those items are why we're here. We're not here for one item. We're not here for a special interest meeting. We are here for the totality of this meeting. There are people who have signed up to speak tonight. I will not leave the meeting because those people who signed up deserve the attention that they came here to receive. So please let the record state that regardless of how people vote or how they vote or whatever your private vote is, I will be sitting here this evening to give the respect of every item on the agenda the attention it deserves.
Thank you, Ms. Mackey.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Manning?
I'd like to clarify also, the statement was made that we did not review a proviso and therefore were before the Supreme Court. That's a, the proviso is a legislative and a gubernatorial issue, not anything that's in front of the school board. So the, the fact that that proviso is in place has nothing to do with this board and what we paid attention to or didn't pay attention to. That is a, that is something that is completely out of our hands. We took action with the Supreme Court lawsuit case, but we did not, not pay attention and allow this proviso or pass a proviso. That has nothing to do with the school board. I want to make sure that's clear.
Thank you, Mr. Manning.
Madam Chair, please, Madam Chair.
Ms. Mackey?
Please allow, a complex sentence perhaps, but please allow the record to state as well that with regard to the Supreme Court action that District Two was taking, all of the board members, with the exception of Ms. Agostini, were present when we discussed that ad nauseam. So there were no surprise. I feel confident with the decision that I made, there are, I can't think of any decisions I've made while sitting on this board that I wasn't confident about making and had done my homework to receive that. Didn't make that decision haphazardly, so I take offense to that on the chance that "they" may include me.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Mackey. Okay, I'm gonna take a point of privilege at this time because I, this is, as you're, as the chair, this is, I've never seen this happen before. I've never seen this and I have been an educator for 30-something plus years and here's my thing. I'm an educator that's actually here for children. I'm not actually here for the shenanigans and the games and the politics because what I'm beginning to see too much of is politics beginning to eke its way into our school district. We have a pandemic going. We have real issues going. I think I said this a year ago and unfortunately, we're saying it again. We're not here to play these kind of games. I'm not here to play these kind of games. But again, I'm also a person that realizes that everybody's grown and everybody has to make whatever political stance or behavior or whatever they feel that they choose to do. I do want to say this on behalf of myself and, and Mr. Manning. Mr. Manning worked very diligently to put all the information together because I lost my brother-in-law and then my father, the day before our funeral, my brother-in-law's funeral, we found him unresponsive and I thought my father was dead and we had, he had to go into the hospital. So I had been very distracted and I relegated my decision-making on this process to Mr. Manning because it's very important, because Dr. Davis deserves that kind of attention to his contract. Mr. Manning did keep in touch with me about it and I'm gonna say this, at every level and at every decision, and what disturbs me is the idea that packages were just given and things were just said. No, there have been conversations and phone calls going back and forth the entire time, the entire time. I do not like grandstanding and making things political because especially when we're talking about the well-being of children. So if we're going to do that, it is what it is tonight. So I apologize to you all that it is what it is tonight. It has turned to that. But having said that, you know, there's an old saying and, well, I probably shouldn't say the saying because it's probably not politically correct, so I won't say that one, but one, you know what, don't stop the show, okay? So what I am gonna say is we're going to continue with the business of what we can continue with. We cannot, oh, we cannot.
According to board policy BEDC, in the absence of a quorum, the only official action that a board may take is to adjourn the meeting until another time and/or date.
Okay.
It would be the recommendation of...
That is, that is, that is our board policy?
That is board policy BEDC, quorum.
Okay.
A quorum will be five members of the board except when two circumstances, except when there are two circumstances. One has to be the board member has resigned and then no new board member has been elected or installed and a member of the board is under disability due to physical or mental illness exceeding 30 days.
Madam Chair.
It would be the recommendation of superintendent to, for the board chair to consider a special call board meeting with only the superintendent's contract on that board meeting and continue to keep the regular scheduled board meeting for the next board meeting in September.
Okay, thank, thank you.
Set a date or time for a special call board meeting, just only having that as the agenda.
Thank you, Dr. Davis. Ms. Mackey?
Question, Madam Chair.
Yes.
There is a motion on the floor. Perhaps we could consider what, because all of this happened during the session, there's a motion on the floor right now. Perhaps we can discuss what to do with that. Secondly, the only action we can take is to adjourn the meeting with regard to that policy. However, can we not still receive information? There are people who've worked hard to provide information for us, with us this evening. I'd hate for us to adjourn without getting a COVID update or the things that are important to parents and teachers who are listening to this meeting to find out where we stand in the district. So if we could still receive information and not vote, that's just a suggestion, but it is up to the pleasure of the chair.
I, I appreciate the suggestion and I actually agree with the suggestion, but sitting in the chair seat is often a very difficult seat as, as I've really finding out tonight. It's a very difficult seat, but I need to make sure because I like to be within the guidelines of what is correct.
Madam Chair.
Just give me one second, Ms. Mackey. So Dr. Davis or, or attorney Carla, are we well within our, are we able to listen or have a presentation or are we out of, out of order with our policy?
You, you can have presentations. It says that the only official action, action is taken by a vote. So there's no, you can't vote on any items, any voting items. That includes items from the executive session, that includes items on the, on the agenda that are related to the, taking a, adopting a resolution. Any item that would have required a vote, you cannot take action. However, you can't conduct the meeting. You just, just... There's just no action can be taken because of an absence of a quorum.
Okay, so. What'd you say, Libby? Okay, yeah, but that's what, so my thing is this. I agree, I agree with Ms., I agree with Ms. Mackey and I agree with, but I wanted to make sure that we're well within what we can legally do according to our policy. So what we're going, yes.
Just as clarification, we, because we were unsuccessful in adopting the agenda, were unable to conduct the meeting because the agenda, the agenda was not adopted. So we never got around to voting on the agenda.
You all are just making this a fun, fun night, aren't you? Okay, so having said that, I'm gonna, you know what, y'all? I'm just, I'm a very real speaking person, so I just got to say this. This, I, I am, I apologize to each and every one of you that came out here tonight. I apologize to you. I do. Because my thing is, you just need to be adult. We all do not, we don't have to vote the same and I don't care how you vote because that's your conscience, that's your choice. Because I'm gonna vote exactly, that's why I was a little offended. I vote the way I want to vote. No one tells me how to vote. And, and, and I'm not telling anybody else how to vote either. But what I do think is when you take on the responsibility to sit in this seats, to sit in these particular seats, you sit through it whether you get what you want or you don't. You stick with it and you allow people the kind of respect that they are due. I don't think that you all were respected tonight and for that, I apologize to you. You came out here and our staff and faculty, I apologize to you all because I know this is after hours. You know, I know those are other duties as specified. I'm sorry. I understand that. And, and, and I, and I was with you, Ms. Mackey. I at least was gonna go through everything with everybody because I feel like that's the right thing to do. But unfortunately, again, sitting in this seat, my hands have now been tied. So we have to adjourn the meeting. Uh, again, I am so sorry. I apologize to you all. Um, I need, we can't even take a motion to adjourn.
Can I say something, Madam Chair?
Madam Chair, I also have a comment. I also have a comment. I have a comment.
Okay. Oh, thank you for that one action. Before we adjourn, uh, I, I, before we adjourn, I will give the people that are here an opportunity to say, can I do that? May I do that?
Thank you. Well, we're still under discussion, technically speaking, are we not? This is still a discussion portion of that motion?
Yeah, we're just discussing, yes. So, Mr. Manning?
Yeah, I'd also like to apologize for the students who their, um, due process rights were delayed. Tonight, because we had student appeals. So we have families that are now, uh, waiting longer, um, for a decision as to what will happen with their students and for the staff who we have to approve tonight, who, um, will not be allowed to start work, um, in the timely manner. And so there are real business impacts to the decisions that were made tonight. Um, and impacts for families that, uh, that I'm not sure, maybe they were considered. But I, I apologize to those folks, um, because those have real impacts. And especially the families with the student discipline. They're left hanging now wondering what will be the fate of their children in our school district. That's a big deal.
Thank you, Mr. Manning. Anybody else want to speak to speak?
Madam Chair, just one thing. I, I did want to apologize to those families whose students are impacted. There are students with disciplinaries who, whenever you have a disciplinary issue, you're out of school until there's a ruling on your appeal. They'll be out of school at least two more weeks now from what I understand. Well, what I surmise, I can't make any, um, assumptions. And there are students who are waiting to be admitted into the Delta Education Center. They can't start until we've ruled on that. So there have been a lot of people who have been impacted tonight. And for all those people, um, because I'm coming, because I'm here to make decisions that impact, that impact other people, I apologize for the people, um, who will be in a state of, in a state of, you know, uh, flux until that happens. So I apologize to those families as well.
Especially to our parents who wanted to know the information. We had updates on COVID. I am, I, I'm very disheartened about that. I know that that's, I'm, I'm a parent too. I'm very disheartened about that. So I apologize to you all for that. Um, anybody else?
You really don't want to hear, you don't want to hear what I have to say. You really don't want to hear.
Yes, yes, actually I do, Dr. Caution Parker.
We are not voted on this board to serve the community and the children of this community and vote for things that we think, we think are where we don't agree with. Just one thing. One issue, one issue should not stop a board meeting or an agenda or a vote. And for those to get up and walk out, these are people that were voted on, onto the board to represent you and to represent these kids and to take care of kids. And kids come first in my book. This is a derelict of duty all the way around. It's disgusting. It's sickening. It was orchestrated and they've moved forward with it. So I am just really disgusted by this whole thing and I think we need to look back at our policy because it changed once before when I was working as a deputy superintendent in the district, where a quorum can be four and a vote, four people, four members can vote and pass and pass an action. And then it changed, and I would say probably the last two years before Dr. Hefter left. We changed it to five and I cannot remember the reason why. That's what happens with age, you forget. But you can't, I can't remember exactly why, but I do know that at one time that it was four. I, so I think we need to go and we need to look at our policy again. Um, we, I know we call you Ms. Carla. Ms. Hawkins. And, um, and, and, and review that policy because this is, this is, to me, is disgusting. I am seventy-two years old. I've been in this district, serving this district over forty years and I have never seen anything as stupid and ignorant as this, this evening. So that's just my two cents worth. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Dr. Caution Parker. Thank you. Okay, at this time, Dr. Davis, did you wish to say anything?
Okay. Uh, at this time, I will take a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Madam Chair, I move to adjourn the meeting.
Is there a second? Second, a move by Ms. Mackey, seconded by Dr. Cheryl Caution Parker. All in favor? Just do a hand vote, aye. Okay, at this time, meeting is adjourned.